Okay, it's six o'clock. Pursuant to the governor's deal with March 29, 2023 revised order suspending certain provisions for the open meeting law, JL Chapter 38, Section 18, meetings of Berkshire Hiltreangel School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remotely through March 31, 2025. Item items are most recently anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items to discuss may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, School Committee Recorder, and the Berkshire Ed and Berkshire Eagle. Once transcribed to a group minutes will be made public or posted to our website. So first order is a roll call. Bill Hope, present. Deanna Hutchinson.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Bonnie.
Yeah.
Sarah.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
Diane. Cory and Richard are not here and Steve Bannon is present.
Steve Bannon, you know, I'd also like to give this a little recall stuff.
Yes.
Who's our new student member from the high school. She's a 10th grader from Stafford. So, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so today's our day where we share stuff on both where we are in the accountability system and CAS. So we're gonna forego our typical roses and thorns to leave more time to talk about that. Also, on the agenda, there's, there's an item around grant approvals and I'm gonna pass over that till our next, our next meeting. One thing I would like to do is have Colin come up and just give a brief update before we get into the accountability and CAS stuff on our work around the portrait of a graduate. So there's work that we're doing in district and then there's also work that's happening across many districts. And I think it makes sense for Colin to tell us about that.
Hi, everybody. I'm happy to share an update with you on this. The work on the portrait of the graduate is moving ahead really strongly. There's been a lot of work and commitment done in the district towards this process so far. And it's allowed us to be in a really good place to hopefully have this wrapped up by the end of the school year and have something that we can share with all of you, with our community, so that we can really start using this as an anchor document for a lot of our work moving forward. Recently, some members of the high school staff and myself attended a symposium by the Mastery Transcript Consortium. This was a great opportunity for us to hear from schools who are a bit further down the road than we are in this process and really learn from some of the experiences that they had. Especially one of the greatest things about this symposium was a lot of these schools also are working on transitioning to proficiency-based learning systems. So it was a great opportunity to see how they really tied these two initiatives together and made sure that they support one another, which is, of course, our goal as well. Allowed some opportunity for us to brainstorm really how we can make sure that the portrait of a graduate, as it comes together, is as effectively connected to our proficiency-based system as possible. In addition, Keith Wright and I will be attending a convening in two weeks that's being put on by BURC-12 and the BAR Foundation. It's gonna be a chance for us to hear about the experiences that other schools in Berkshire County have had with creating their portrait of a graduate and what some of the lessons they learned along the way are as well, to allow us to work with other county-based schools in kind of making sure our portrait of a graduate represents some of our bigger picture community values that are shared across the county. At this convening, there will also be other schools from across New England that have as well gone through the process of generating a portrait of a graduate. Some work in proficiency-based learning systems and some who are kind of examining other shifts in their grading systems to really allow us that opportunity to network with communities and with colleagues who are doing the same work while we are, to allow us to make sure that ours ends up as kind of well put together as possible. The third kind of branch of work that we have going right now, we've reached out to educators from across the district in some help making an I statement based word sentences and words to kind of generate what our six attributes are and how they can be utilized by students. That's why they're being written from the point of view of an I statement, so students will be able to harness these things and utilize them in their reflective process and use them at times like student-led conferences to really kind of comment and take ownership of their learning journey and how they're doing with our proficiencies and moving towards these graduation kind of concepts that we have.
Questions? It's a lot to digest. Obviously, Colin will come back and, and talk some more about it. But I thought it's good to have sort of the highest level goals in the context when we did it, just to bring in their detail.
What does the final portrait require? Is it a 10-page document or?
No, currently, our, our goal is to have it being no more than a three-page document. The kind of first page, the one pager that could exist, would have these I statements, the ones that are gonna be chosen by a focus group that's being put together to include educators and student point of view. And then the list of kind of conjoined attributes that go with those I statements that kind of highlight exactly what we're looking for for our students and their learning journey. The second page will be direct connections, kind of tying our aspects of the portrait of a graduate to aspects of our proficiency-based learning system to really anchor those two documents together and make their clear connections as clear as possible to the community. And a third page might have, and this is what we're still working on, and we're hoping the focus group will be able to put together a bit more of an in-depth look at how this document really lives in our students' lives and in their experience as they go K to 12 in our district.
And, and a thing that you might remember, when, when we did the trip to San Diego last year, one of the things the students came back and, and all the staff was this notion of moving from poster to practice. So we'll end up with some nice posters around what our portrait of a graduate is. But then the next step will be for people to own and internalize that in their work as, as, as teachers and staff and for students in their learning as learners. Cool. Thanks a bunch, Colin. I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
So the, the first thing I want to talk about is, is the accountability report. So you've got an electronic copy of this in your, your packet. And, and this hasn't happened a lot to us. The accountability report is, and, and what I'm about to share is good news, right? So, so don't, don't hang on.
Just for the record, for the minutes, Diane is here and Cory is on.
Oh, great.
It gets corrected in later minutes.
Okay, thank you. So, so each year we get an accountability report. It's tied to state and federal reporting. And in the 15 years now that I've been here, I think we've gotten a clean or good bill of health only twice. And that's not because we're not doing remarkable work, but it's because there's usually one small thing in one school that ripples over that, that puts us on the, on the less than good list. And this year, thankfully, there is, there's nothing that's putting us on the, on the less than good list. So, so we're in, in good standing, seen as making progress in all our targets. What's hard about some of the stuff in paper is when you look at the electronic version, you can, you can click around. So in the middle of the page, there's this little box that says schools and district. So when you're looking at this on your laptop or computer, you can click on schools and district and then it drills down to what's going on at, at Moneybrook, Du Bois, and Monument. Historically, we, we weren't in the clear because some subgroup used to either not be making progress or we didn't have a high enough participation rate in the testing. Like when other districts, not so much ours, but, but neighboring districts were doing testing boycotts, they'd be under the threshold for participation, so they'd be cited. If, if a particular subgroup is, is comparatively dramatically underachieving, they, we'd be cited for that. But, but again, this year, we're not. If you dig into it a little bit, and this is what will get to the AMAS, there are really two things that the state tests are trying to measure. One is absolute achievement and one is growth. Ideally, achievement and growth would both be really high. It's easier, though, to have high growth coming off a low achieving year. And it's harder to have high growth coming off a high achieving year. And there's some places where you can see growth, like you see growth in, in fourth through 10th grade. And those students are making lots of growth in third grade. There's no previous measurement to measure that growth against, right? And then, so to give you broader context, we'll look at this in a sec. Kids take tests in English and math in third through eighth grade, in, in science in fifth and eighth grade. And then in high school, in, most students, ninth grade biology, we'll talk to this when we get to it. And then 10th grade math and English. And those are also graduation requirements from the state. And, and there's gonna be a thing on this next valid trying to undo that, right? It's been approved by the, by the Attorney General's Office. So again, if we're on accountability, if you turn to the second page, you see in, in each of these, how many points we earned as a district and, and how many possible points we could earn. And there's some places where we earn the maximum number of points and that's great. And then there are other places where we earn less than the maximum number of points or, or no points. And that's, that's a growth, not to use growth too much, but that's an area that we can work on. Any questions about the accountability report?
Who does this?
So, so this is a federal requirement, but the state aggregates all the data and does it with them. Now, what's really interesting is Massachusetts has some of the highest standards in the country. So our report is better than the paper it's written on. And some other states, and I won't name them because they'll holler at me, have less rigorous standards, right? Silly standards. And, and, and so they have a similar report, but it may not be signifying much of anything. So we're good on this?
It's a federal requirement to standard local or statewide, state-bitten.
Correct.
So the targets, who sets the targets? The federal government or the state?
The, the state does completely approval of the, of the feds. And it's really complicated. You're such a teacher, like really complicated state rights or federal rights and who gets to do what. The, the, the feds have a lot of money that helps out in schools and they have a lot of swag. And you can, and it's almost like the, the drinking age and the highway money, right? The feds couldn't mandate it, but if you didn't change your drinking age to 21, you didn't get any highway money. So everybody's in the regulae to 21.
So is it right to interpret the second page?
Yeah.
At the bottom, in the three categories, all students, lower performing students, and all students high school as 50%, 68%, 25%? Am I looking at the right indicators of assessment? We see where I am. It's percentage of possible points that have three lines from the bottom.
Yeah, my grants are good.
Yes.
So we're doing well in, with lowest performing students.
Very well, yeah.
Very well. We're sort of middle of the pack with all students non-high school. And we've got work to do with high school. Is that fair?
Yes, but we'll get to that more in the context of this.
Okay.
Right, so this report shows from, from all possible points, we're, we're in a, we're not getting as many as we can, but, but you'll see in the, in the achievement and growth things that in some areas, we're biology, but we're the strongest in the county. So we'll unpack it a little bit more.
Good.
So what I'd like to do now is, is in a sec, and I'll pass this out as I start talking and then, so you have a paper copy that you can write notes on. For our home audience, these slides will be available either tomorrow or Monday morning. And, and then I'll put the slides up and, and walk us through them. What, what I'm gonna do is I'll, I'll share a little context, then I'll talk through the first four or five slides. Then each principal will come up and sit next to me and they'll talk through their slides. And, and we'll pause at different points. So if you have questions about the overview, I'll pause and you can ask me. Then if you have questions, you can ask Katie, Miles, or Christie about their specific buildings. In the testing perspective, the elementary school is the luckiest because they teach in two subjects in only two grades. From a testing perspective, the middle school is the headache because they teach, they test in English and math in four grades plus science in grades five and eight. And then the high school is really only testing in three subjects. But then Christie also has AP exams to report on. And I think that's in, we can count it when we get there, but it's, it's 13 discrete AP exams that people are taking. On this way, there, not literally grab one of these, but share in the chat.
Okay.
And then I don't think there, or maybe you can take one because Cory's online. Thanks. So just give me a sec with your mystery. And I know you really wanna, you really wanna turn a head. That's human nature, but don't, don't ruin the movie. Good. So a couple of things, right? The, the last time was sort of the normal time was 2019, which was before COVID. And that was the last sort of set of decent data we had. And then we didn't have really any data in, in 20 and 21 and 22. In many subjects, they were, there was half as much time on testing. So the, the testing people, like psychometricians, talk about validity and reliability. And so 21 and 22 were both less valid and less reliable. So we're, we're, I mentioned that we're coming, that our accountability status is good and we're coming out of the pandemic. So there's still some lingering effects. The, the classes I'm most concerned about continue to be the 12th graders because they started high school and potentially weren't as rooted in ninth grade because they didn't really get to come, right? And then, but maybe both the third and fourth grade, because when they started elementary school, they, they also weren't here as much in a really foundational time, right? So we're moving past the pandemic, but, but the impact of the pandemic ain't, ain't over yet. In, in the past, connected to the pandemic, just sort of in general, there were quite significant issues of absenteeism. And, and those issues are, are getting quite a bit better. Statewide, this, this round of testing, there were small increases in math and English and decreases in, in science. And there remains a continued opportunity for us to particularly work on, on students improving their writing and open-ended responses, right? So you take these tests and a lot of them are, are multiple choice and then there are parts that are open responses. And the, the open response for us, the whole state, probably the whole nation is a growth area. So this, this next slide is, and this is now the standard we're, we're moving to in, in all our grading. And it's a little funky because it goes from left to right and, and, and in, in some contexts, it might go from, from right to left, right? But so, so the best you can do on something is to exceed expectations. The next best are to meet expectations. The third best are to partially meet expectations and the least best are, are not meeting expectations. When, when we look at student growth percentile, we really want to be in the 40% to 60%, which is typical growth. In the first 19%, that's seen as low growth. 20th to 39, or very low growth, 20 to 39 is low growth. 60 to 79 is high growth and 80 to 99 is, is very high growth. You can only really do very high growth if you did terribly the year before, right? That's the, that's the only way to get there. So when I look at these, I really like to see things in the 40% to 60% range. And, and every once in a while, you get a, a particular class or group that's, that's challenging, right? It just happens. And, and, and you work through that. And sometimes the, their growth in one year might not be so good, but then their growth the year after is really quite perfect. Any questions about this slide? Okay, so we'll keep going. So this is an interesting thing. This is this, through this group called Open Architects. And this is a longitudinal representation of what's going on in ELA over the last several years. You, you'll notice that 2020 isn't on the, on the Y-axis, right? Christie, is the Y-axis you're talking about?
No, X. That's the X.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. So there you go. So it's not on the bottom axis. And, and we're the turquoise line and the dotted line is the state line. So we're fairly consistent with the state. We're a little bit above it. And then if, if you look at the bar chart or bar graph, the, the darkest blue is exceeding, the next blue is meeting, the gray is partially meeting, and, and the bottom one is, is not meeting. Sorry. This, this is sort of what it is. And in this case, we're a little bit above the state is good. I'd like to see us significantly higher above the state. The, the average student growth percentile, the top right one, is 50.1. So that's pretty significantly higher than the state average. And then the middle one is the average Yale score. So that's the, the number that drives a lot of this. And again, it's a little better than the previous year and it's a little higher than the state. And the percent of students proficient is a little better than the previous year and a little higher than the state. And, and this is all of it, right? So three to 10. The next one's math. And, and math is interesting. We were a little below the state and we sort of got even with the state and we're a teeny bit off the state 1%. The next one is, is the science. And this is something I'm really psyched about. And this is largely driven by the high school science testing. And, and when we get to it, Chris, I'll explain it. But, but in, in this area, we're, we're significantly above the state. And, and notice the, the growth in the students exceeding. And then when we look at the high school again, like the, the dark blue part in the top right corner, we'll see that exaggerated even more in a, in a good way. Any questions so far? Okay.
And we, what's that? How do you explain this? This overachievement? I mean, is it over teaching?
Yeah, I mean, Christie will really talk about it. I think the, the middle school teaching in fifth and eighth grade is stable. But the high school teaching in biology, and it's a bunch of that, right? It's the teaching, it's the shift in the curriculum, it's the meeting. A year ago, when Elsa and Beth came and did that remarkable presentation about the, the blue people in Pennsylvania and all of this. Like, it's really rigorous and accessible at multiple levels. So that, from a number perspective, the high school performance is, is lifting all boats in, in science. And when you see it discreetly as the high school numbers, they'll be even more obvious. And so this is, I think, where we want to go aspirationally. So this is the accountability system over time. And there's some good news here and, and some challenging news. So the accountability system considers a whole bunch of factors: achievements, student growth, high school completion, progress towards English proficiency for English language learners, chronic absenteeism, like it should go down, not up, and, and advanced coursework completion. So if you look at, at Moneybrook over the last several years, there's really nice progress. It went from 54 to 47, 59 to 65. That's where we wanna go. And I'm gonna skip Du Bois for a second. We'll come back to it. But similarly, Monument was at 45 to 41 to 53 to 55. I think those are the beginnings of really significant trends. All right, now let me go back to, to Du Bois. And it was 1935, 39, but then down to 30. So that's another kind of trend. And, and we have our work cut out for us to, to turn that around. The next thing for Miles stepping in as the new principal is, remember I said about growth scores at the beginning? There's lots of opportunities for, for growth there, right? And I don't say that like, everybody's sort of chuckling at me. I don't say it in a provocative way, but, but it's a nice opportunity. Questions about that?
I assume we can break down these numbers and figure out why one went up and others went down?
Totally. Yeah, I mean, we could do a really deep data dive until everybody's heads on. But I think this is, this is accessible. And a couple of them, like in some places, the achievements flat, but growth is up. High school completion has historically been quite high, but the last couple of years, tied to the pandemic, we've taken a little hit there. English proficiency, we were doing really well and then our numbers started doubling every year, right? So we're working on that and I think building the capacity to do well there. And then our advanced coursework completion is really quite high. I think everybody at the high school completes the, the mass core, which isn't the case for one of our unnamed neighboring districts. So some, some district notice things. I think all our work around social learning is starting and continuing to have a positive impact. I mentioned the accountability percentile is improving at the elementary and high school, but decreasing at the middle school. We have some achievement and growth gaps, and sometimes those are called opportunity gaps. So it's not blaming the people who are in a particular group for what's going on, right? And, and I'll talk about that a little bit. And nowhere on the, the good list from an accountability perspective. We do have a lot of work to do from an achievement perspective. And, and, and we'll be spending our meeting in two weeks talking about some of the concrete steps that we're gonna follow up on. Things we're psyched about, science, especially high school science. Some math achievement and growth and some work around language and reading. Some relative weaknesses. So SWD stands Student with Disability Achievement Gaps or Opportunity Gaps. So when we really dig into the data, we can cut the data a hundred different ways, right? By gender, by race and ethnicity, by income, by disability or non-disability, by high needs, which is an aggregate number that includes special education, disability, students with 504, economic hardship, whole host of things. And, and, and we have some gaps to close and some gaps to work on. And, and historically, we pride ourselves that the gap between typical students and and students with disabilities has been fairly small. Like, there's, well, likely there would be some sort of gap. But it's much better if the gap's smaller than it's larger.
Is is one of the labels of students with disabilities, the inability to speak English?
Uh, that one specifically is is kids with educational plans. But in the, we cut the data by um, um, English language learners. Uh, in our finance subcommittee, we're talking about another group, uh, SLITE. So students with limited uh, 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 formal education or interrupted or limited formal education. Uh, so that could be in the in the bigger high needs group. Uh, there's, we can cut the data by current English language learner or former English language learner. So the goal is to move students forward and out of supports. But if you time it wrong, you you move them when they still need some supports. And and if you time it wrong the other way, you keep them uh in too supportive environment uh, and and don't don't move them forward. So there there's a lot of different ways to.
Does the state MCAS system specifically say that if you can't speak English, that's a disability? Or is that too politically sensitive that they didn't want to get into that?
No, I mean.
But I mean, technically, speaking.
Right.
Educationally, it is a disability. You cannot take a test because you need somebody to translate the questions for you.
Right.
You're either.
No, so they they don't categorize them as a disability, but just like, how's your Mandarin now?
My grandson.
I just would like to share the the tests, that there is an accommodation, like for students taking math tests, they can take it in Spanish. I don't know if you're aware of that.
No, no. Okay, okay. So in a sec, we're gonna have the principals come up. Well, now is the second. So.
Do we have some sort of, that's not for this time, can we look at whoever loaned you from or five years ago, not testing wise, but how many students did that as opposed to now?
Yes, yeah, right.
And I assume low income is wrong.
It is. So we'll we'll look at another sheet after this that I'll walk you through. But our our percentage of low income kids is in the mid forties now. And we we sort of correlates to what used to be the the uh free and reduced lunch number. And we used to chase around having people fill out forms. But now it's just drawn from state and federal data sets. So we have, we we can talk about that. We can talk about have which groups were successful at moving more and which groups were were potentially moving less. All right, other questions on this? Okay, so what what we're gonna do is each of the principals is gonna speak. I'll click the slides and you in front of you. Uh, and 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 they'll share some context. Katie gets the the good deal because because there are only four four assessments in her building.
Okay, so what you're seeing, I think you'll see further throughout the presentation. Um, so on the left is a number chart list of what you're seeing on the right in the color, basically. Um, but more detailed. So in general, this is our third grade testing. And I'll show you on a later slide that our overall math tests have taken a dip a little bit. Um, but you can see that we want the green and the blue bars to do a couple of things. You want it to be above the state or significantly above the state. Um, so we have a few challenges. So in ELA, English Language Arts for Grade Three, you can see that meeting expectations is much greater than the state. You can see that exceeding expectation is a little lower than the state. One thing I will say is that you have to be kinda, um, we only have sixty six kids taking the test. So when you look at percentages, you have to be slightly careful about uh looking at that. But at the end of the day, you also want the red bar to be below the state. You want the orange bar below the state. So we are definitely below the state and above the state in areas that we wanna be. But at the end of the day, you want very few in in the red. Um, less of the orange and of course more of the green and blue. And you can see on the bottom slightly different for math. Um, we have a much taller orange bar, partially meeting. Um, slightly above the state in meeting and below the state in exceeding.
And and before I go to the next slide, also notice the participation rate, because this will come up later in other places. So um, the participation rate's a hundred percent here, so every single third grader took a test. Uh, there's there's some places where fewer than a hundred percent of students are taking tests. And and that may just be because people are skipping it, or it may be by design. But um, I, when I look at at data, if the if the percentage rate is high, then I think it's an accurate representation of what's going on there. And and if you go below a certain, it's like you get cited for it. But um, some places might have a ninety seven percent participation rate. They don't get cited, but they're excluding uh, uh, three percent of their kids who who might drive the average down. Okay, so who's your fourth grade data?
Okay, so fourth grade data is the the topic for us. As you can see, we're pretty even with the state on partially meeting, slightly above um, for exceeding and slightly above remaining in ELA. For math, um, pretty, pretty, other than a few more orange than the state, um, we're pretty even with the state in math.
It's a street school and district.
Hey, we talked about that. Uh, uh, there there's uh, there's not a huge difference. There is a difference, right? If you look at the math ones, the the. Yeah, uh, it's, um, I I need to go back and and check. I mean, it's it's one student, but it might have been somebody who transferred out and it's still charged to us.
Is that, is clearly, does that have to do with you have multiples schools?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's it's in the report, but we don't, right? So.
That's right.
Right. But but if if we were, I don't know, Westfield or Pittsfield and we had four elementary schools, then then you see the one school, the schools in aggregate and and. Uh, so just to give this context, this is the open architecture thing. So this is looking at it longitudinally over time.
So this is um, ELA, it's all of our grades together. Um, and you'll see that we're slightly above the state in proficiency, slightly above the state in the average scale score and well above the state in average student growth. Um, you can see all of them. Um, the trend continues that we are up and down with advanced, uh, up and down with needing, and of course, up and down with needs. Yep, the next slide is math, which has a slightly different first to then to the three, if you pronounce the word. Um, we still remain slightly above the state, but one of the things that is remarkable to us is that we just put in um illustrative math program last year. So often when you start a program, the hope is that you go down slightly because you're instituting a new program and teachers are teaching slightly differently. But then once it it should correct itself a little bit um, next year, at least that's what we're hoping for.
And and the fear is, people see this and they're like, oh, no, the, it's the program, right? And then they back away from implementing it with with high fidelity. So what Katie and Cynthia are doing is is reminding people to to stay the course. Uh, opportunity for for uh growth um is still there. And if we push through, then then we'll be in a better spot.
Um, in both of those areas, um, in the coming year, our correction, our correction is a couple of things. But in general, we're we're with our scheduling, we're making sure that we have um, supported small group math time and supported uh, English Language Arts, what I need groups. Which means that if you need intervention, you get intervention at that time. If you need enrichment, then you get enrichment at that time. So that's part to address the up and down of enrichment and the increasing of kiddos who would might end up advanced.
Well, one of the discussions we've had over many years is throwing money at stores. And what happens is after two years, if you say, um, we gotta go to another program. Well, finding the right program at the beginning, sticking through as opposed to keep changing.
Right.
And then all you see is up and down, up and down.
Yeah, in the math small groups, the, one of the issues that we saw with illustrative math is that for for the littles, you really need to have that um, basic math, addition, subtraction, multiplication and division. And one of the the parts of illustrative math requires this small group time where kids are rotating through centers and really doing this constant practice of those things. So it's a, we're really trying to get the the schedule so that it's appropriate that they're getting in, uh, what they need in both areas. And then Cynthia and I chose this slide. Um, it's ELA based, but uh, pretty much math looks similar. That um, this is our high needs group, so it's a combined group. It's all of your um, English language learners, all of your students with disabilities that are in one big group and their achievement is is shown here. So that's another um, idea for our work to get that intervention more targeted in uh what the kiddos need.
Okay, um, any questions? All right, we'll we'll transition to Miles. Just Miles, before you start, uh, the the ones that are um, green, orange, red and blue, those are from a state program. And you can, I'll show you or I'll send you links. You can go to that. The ones that are blue, uh, two shades of blue, gray and red are from uh like an internal thing called Open Architects. Just yesterday, the state released a a third thing that's sort of is parallel to the Open Architects one. It's public and anybody can use. So I'll send you a link to that. And if you wanna like be a data scientist, you can do the dropdown for Berkshire Hills and pick up a particular grade and run reports till you you can't stand it anymore. Right, which some some people like to do. All right, Miles, tell us what's going on.
Well, I I wanna, you know, be careful how I I practice things because I think as we go through the data, we are gonna see that there is some room to grow. And I wanna, one thing I wanna be careful about is that, you know, throughout the time that I've been at the middle school, which has been a significant amount of time, we have a group of very talented and dedicated educators at the middle school. Um, and so I really do believe that the problem is actually not one of skill. But I do think that some of our practices are out of alignment with the measurements um that we're taking. And uh, we need to look at the the rigor of some of our uh practices. And and I can talk actually quite a bit about the things that we're starting to do this year to increase both the alignment of what we're doing and and the rigor of it. But let me get into the data because uh, I, there's some of this data that I'm pretty proud to show you. Um, and a lot of it's here on this first slide. So you can see we're at um, yeah, yeah, grade five, um, for ELA and mathematics that in terms of our students' meeting expectations, we outperformed the state uh by quite a bit. Um, in terms of students' meeting expectations and, you know, given the network students tested, we're not far off um, in terms of students that exceed expectations. And when we turn our attention to the math data, we're perfectly consistent with the state in terms of uh exceeding expectations. Um, and did again outperform the state in terms of students who met expectations on the test. Um, more, it was sixty percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations for ELA. And um, fifty three percent of our students uh were meeting or exceeding in terms of math. And so I think obviously there's room for growth in those numbers, but those are very respectable results from our fifth grade team of educators uh, building on, you know, the fourth grade progress uh Katie was just mentioning. In terms of science, we did still outperform the state, um, not as dramatically. Um, but hey, never said it. Um, and you know, there's other information, you know, as we get into this down the line, we still did have uh more students' meeting expectations than was the state average. Uh, a little bit fewer in terms of exceeding. Uh, but still, I was happy with the growth in of our students and the way they performed in the fifth grade um forecast here. Um, I've already spoken with our fifth grade team. Uh, you know, we really want to double down and even spread some of their practices um throughout the school. They're doing very good work. As we start to look at uh sixth grade, we see in our sixth grade ELA uh, that in terms of students' meeting expectations, we outperformed the state there. Um, uh, fifty percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, uh, which is better than the state average. Um, and in terms of math, we definitely have some work to do. Uh, these are uh concerning numbers in our sixth grade math, especially coming off of the growth that we see in fifth grade. Uh, so we need to look at the, like I was saying, uh, rigor and alignment um, in our sixth grade math program and also see how we can support that. Uh, moving on to seventh grade, um, we see uh, some of the patterns we saw in our sixth grade math. We see in seventh grade um, ELA and math um, that we are actually underperforming the state in both of those areas in seventh grade. Um, and uh, I'm just, there's been nothing more I can say about that now except that the work that we're doing right now, I think is already very promising um in terms of turning that around. When you look at eighth grade, uh, in terms of eighth grade ELA, we can see a little, uh, the numbers are better than our seventh grade numbers. They're still actually not up to state averages. Uh, in terms of math, we do come much closer to returning to the state averages um, for um, meeting and exceeding expectations, although still not as high in the exceeding category. And then eighth grade science, uh, you know, it kind of looks like a level graph all the way across. We're we're right on par um with the state in most areas with like more students exceeding expectations. The next couple of slides are kind of broken down by uh subgroups in terms of ethnicity. And they're interesting to me just in terms of the kind of raw average scale score, right? We do see uh the students who identify as white having the highest raw average scale score. But we see the highest student growth rates in our minority students. And um, I was really glad to see that because we have actually been putting a significant emphasis on equitable opportunity in our schools. So it's nice to see the growth that's being achieved by uh some of our minority students. I will admit, you know, some of these numbers, like in terms of Asian students and students who identify as black, those are subgroups of six. And so those are very small percentages, but you know, growth is growth. Uh, and I'm really happy to see it. So the first graph is that growth in terms of ELA. Uh, the second is in terms of math. And again, you see in terms of of raw scores, right? Our our white students are doing very well, but the. Our, our white students are doing very well, but the growth score, the best growth score is actually being helped by our students who identify as being multiracial. Science, um, it's harder to calculate an STP when they're down in annual tests. That's why that box in the middle is blank. But, uh, I did wanna kind of a coolly helpful wrap to show that our focus on equity over the past few years has, I think, been effective at powering some of our, uh, minority students. And then the last two slides I put in, um, just because, um, I wanted to emphasize for myself the work that we have to do in terms of STPs. The, where I'm looking right now is the center bottom, um, bar graph. I'm looking at STP by grade level. Um, the goal that I have as we move forward is that our STP by grade level is at or above that dotted line in grades five, six, uh, seven and eight.
I'm sorry, I've lost you. What page are you aware of?
I'm sorry, I'm moving right for this. I'm on slide, uh, twenty-four. It's the one that's, it's the one that's up right now. And what I'm looking at is, uh, student growth percentile. You can see really high growth in fourth and fifth and tenth grade. Um, and I'm just setting this here as a goal that I'd like to see growth scores up and above that line, um, at this time next year, when I'm back here doing a similar report. Um, I'd like to see a higher level of growth both in ELA, which is on this chart, and math, which is on my final slide here.
On that slide twenty-four, on the far right, it says state average and district average, which parallel each other. But where did a district average come from? What's the district?
We, we talked about practically the district and the school are the, are the, uh,
There's no, no relationship between the lines for the school, which is light blue.
So, no, but, but this includes the, both the fourth grade and the tenth grade. Do you follow me there?
No. So it was.
So the, the three lines there, the, the dark dotted line is the state average, um, SGP. The dotted line is grades four, five, six, seven, eight and ten in terms of SGP. The blue line is grades five, six, seven, eight. So you can see from the bar graph that the, the school, the fourth through ten actually is a higher percentage of SGP than just the blue line, which is grades five through eight.
Okay, it's just, it's weird how that, those lines.
Yeah. And, and you can also see too, that the, the trajectory that the middle school has been on, that shows is, is actually recovering from the pandemic. Right? Up until it has kind of plateaued this year. So we would like to get back on track with, uh, stronger growth.
Do you still have accelerated math programs in seventh grade?
So in seventh grade, we have one seventh grade math course. In eighth grade, we have two versions. We have eighth grade math and we have algebra.
And how you feed in from seven, like six, seven into the.
Into algebra sections?
Yeah.
So towards the end of their seventh grade year, um, the teachers and students hold, uh, a series of, uh, conferences with each other. The eighth grade teacher comes down and presents, you know, differences so students can elect to move into algebra. They can be recommended to move into algebra. We try to put, we, we believe in heterogeneous groupings, like along the same lines of teaching that's going on in that high school biology course. Um, but we also want students to be on a math track if they want to be in algebra, so that they can move up through, um, you know, a robust high school math program that has a calculus. I wanna make sure that everybody who wants that opportunity can take it.
So what happens to those students in seventh grade that want that opportunity?
They, all.
Or does that work?
So if all students in seventh grade, um, can, you know, based on their performance in seventh grade and their desires, move into algebra in, in eighth grade.
But, but I think what you're asking is like, are we all offering algebra in seventh grade?
Oh, no.
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 But, but on the other side, like, I don't know, fourteen years ago, there were probably ten kids in eighth grade algebra.
Yeah.
And, and though your classes are smaller now, that numbers.
We have close to forty kids.
Right.
In eighth grade algebra. Right now, it's, it's really grown.
Do you find that it's challenging for the kids in seventh grade? Like when you're working toward the, I don't know how many years it's been since there were the accelerated math programs in seventh and eighth grade, but, um, does that reflect any, is that reflected in any of the math growth that we see here?
Uh, I don't think so. I mean, we, we've been growing our practice in terms of meeting multiple sets of needs in the same classroom. Um, and do you think, you know, coming back to what I, I said earlier, looking at our seventh grade classroom last year, uh, the instruction was not well aligned to the test that students are gonna be taking. Um, that's something that we really need to address.
I, I, I think it's pretty unusual for schools to teach a full algebra course in seventh grade anywhere. There are lots of debates around, I mean, it's like a big national debate around eighth grade algebra. And what, part of what's driving our thinking, and, and we have some contradictory thinking on this, is, um, for better and maybe for worse, high school calculus is still a major gatekeeping device to lots of advanced math. But the mathematicians will tell you that calculus may not be so joyful, but two classes past calculus are, are really joyful. So there's this big tension about if, if you wanna study the sciences in college, you, you probably really need to do the whole sequence. But there's also many other types of math that are much more applied and practical, where you wouldn't complete the sequence. Right? So that's, that's a whole nother meeting, uh, and, and, and we could bring articles on both sides of that and, and, um, I don't wanna get Christie going, these are former math teachers.
Hold that. Can you come talk to me after this?
Anyone else before we move on? Thank you, Miles. It was really thoughtful. So Christie, you good?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Miles, did we miss this slide?
No.
Oh, I just went back. Okay.
All right. So, uh, starting off for the high school, we have here our grade ten. Um, what do we have here?
Can I just?
Yes.
Stop me for one second. Just, so for these grade levels, like when we look back, Miles, look like grade eight, was that last year's eighth grade?
Yes.
So this grade ten, is this last year's tenth grade?
Yes.
Okay.
These are the students that took the, the ELA and math exam in May, well, March and May of last year.
As tenth grade.
Right. Right. Class of two thousand, two thousand twenty-five.
Right. So their current, now they're at eleven.
Learning.
In the biology too, is. We'll get to that. That's complicated.
Okay. So that's, well, biology is dealing a lot of wire, of all the grades.
Right.
How, yes. How, how it is presented is different than the other grades. So what we are looking at on slide twenty-six is the, um, same type of bar graph that you saw earlier for both the middle and the elementary school, for the ELA, uh, tenth grade and the math tenth grade. Um, and, uh, we were performing, and I don't have the school listed here. I chose district because we are all one high school district, so school and district numbers are virtually the same. Um, and we, for ELA, we're performing in line with the state. Um, and for math, we were below the state for exceeding, but then above for our meeting, and then pretty much in line, partially and a little below and not meeting. So, um, our performance is very similar to the state in both subject areas. The one thing I did wanna highlight, and on the next slide, I have little circles here, as you're looking from twenty twenty-one uh, to twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, um, you'll see the jump happening in our participation rate. Of course, twenty twenty-one being the year, uh, the first year after when we were back in school. And so we have a much lower, um, participation rate in MCAS that year, only eighty percent of our students participated in MCAS. And then in twenty twenty-two, last year, we went up. And now this past spring, we were at ninety-nine percent. Um, what I did wanna highlight, um, connected to that increase in participation rate is that we also were in, working on increasing the number of our English language learners that were participating in the test. So you all know that we have the, um, big jump in number of English learners in the school. In twenty twenty-two, we only have one of those students participating in testing. And last year, we had nine of our students participating in testing. And then in twenty, and, and, so we also had a much bigger jump of students tested that were in our high needs, um, group in twenty twenty-three. So of the students tested, fif- almost fifty-two percent of them fall into one of the categories of either low income or English learner, former English learner, or uh, special education. Yes. Ready for the next one? Uh, this is also a three-year trend, um, with state comparison in math. I don't have a full up set. Anybody has questions, please fill out your answers. And when we get to the next slide, this is our science, which is biology, the way in which this is calculated. And so Peter's gonna chime in if I misstate, but the biology calculation shown on these slides is the students', um, achievement at the end of tenth grade. So some students, most of our students take the exam in ninth grade. You might have a couple that take it in tenth grade, and that is put together to do the analysis. If a student transfers into Monument in their tenth grade year, their ninth grade score from their sending school is not counted in our data. And if we have a student who takes the test in ninth grade and transfers somewhere else, their score is not counted in that data. So that's the little bit of a nuance with this particular, um, slide. So again, I'm comparing, um, this year to the previous year, um, the participation rate did increase. And we did still have, um, some, you know, results that Peter already highlighted. We have a, a higher percentage of students that are exceeding expectations, a higher percentage of students that are meeting expectations, um, and much lower and not partially, and not meeting. We'll continue. I took it a step further, um, and I did this for science, and then I also did it for ELA and math. I did not share those slides, but I will talk about that. So, um, this first slide is a comparison of our data, uh, for the science this year compared to all of the other, uh, schools in the county. And the state is the final line, and we are outperforming everyone in the county and the state. Um, we're actually twenty-one percentage points higher than the state when you combine meeting and exceeding together. Only eight percent of our students didn't meet the target, and this year we did have a ninety-nine percent participation rate. The next slide shows the same comparison, but just for the students in our high needs category. And, uh, we still are outperforming all the other schools in the county and the state here. Keeping in mind that just about fifty-three percent of the students who took the exam in, were considered high needs. So that's the percentage. It's actually a higher percentage even than the state. The state only had fifty-one percent of students taking the exam total in high needs. So this was the first time that I am aware of that our percentage of students in high needs taking the test is higher than the state is.
You did it for, Peter, can you just define high needs?
High needs is, yes, students on IEPs, English language learners, former English language learners, and students that are classified as low income. I did the same effect charts for, um, ELA and for math, and we actually, both, um, subject areas are third in the county, um, in both math and ELA, both for all of our students and for, um, our high need subgroups. The only two schools in the county that are outperforming us in math and ELA are Mount Greylock and Lennox are the two schools. Now, both of, both, both the school districts have a pretty different demographic.
And we'll talk about that. And your question.
Yeah, so on slide thirty-one, ninety-nine percent participation, I mean, uh, ninety-nine percent of all the kids in that grade, so special, high needs.
That is correct.
Everybody's in. And then down here, it's, uh, fifty-three percent are in the state on the next page, thirty-one.
Fifty-three percent of the students that took the test are in the subgroup high needs.
Right, and then you found to get this data.
That's correct.
Okay. By about how much are the other two districts performing?
On the ELA and math, and I actually have it.
Boy, and I think the sheet we're gonna, we're gonna talk about.
Okay.
This is too many slides already, like thirty-seven slides, to put like five more slides in every, it'll fall apart. Right, but, 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 but.
Okay. And so moving out to the last couple of slides here is, uh, AP data. Uh, the number of students testing last year actually dropped, um, and, and interestingly, it was a lot of students that at the last minute opted not to take the exam. So there were students, the, the students now have to sign up to take the exams in October. And they have to pay and make the decision in October before they even gone through the whole course. That's changed in the past couple of years. And as students are making decisions about colleges, if they know they're going to a college that is not likely to accept the exam for any credit, they often are actually making the choice to not take the exam. They don't wanna sit for the exam if they're not gonna have, if they already are into school, they know what school they're gonna go to, and the school's not gonna accept the exam, uh, for any course credit. And unfortunately, more and more colleges are doing that. And because we're not a school that requires, if you take an AP test, you have to take the exam. Um, I, I, you know, I don't know what we're gonna see in the future, but it wouldn't surprise me if our numbers of students taking the exam, they actually are drop off a little from where they were, you know, ten years ago, let's say.
There, there might just, to add one thing, there might even be a, a statewide shift to more dual enrollment partnered with the state community colleges, because they all have articulation agreements, and if you earn credits, for example, at the C C, and then you go to Bridgewater State, you can bring all those credits with you in, in, in a way that you can't with, with AP credits. But if you go, for example, to, to Williams, they may or may not take your, your, um, community college credits, but they might take two of your, or, or give you credit for the equivalent of two classes for your AP classes, whether you take two AP tests or, or eight. Or maybe if the score is higher, like a four instead of a three. Yeah, right, or, or, or a five. But I, in my, one of my son, in my son's experience, you know, a whole lot of AP credits, all at a very high level, and you get two counted.
Right.
So it's a complicated conversation, but I just wanted to highlight that the number of students that assess your total AP students are the AP students taking exams, not the number of AP students enrolled in AP courses in the school. So that would be a different data set. I just wanna name that, that the fifty-six doesn't represent the total number of students enrolled in classes. It represents the total number that had signed up to take AP, that, that, that took AP exams.
So can I ask there more, are fewer kids taking AP courses, or is it about the same? That's saying about the same?
Maybe, but. Maybe the number of students taking AP courses is staying about the same. It goes up and down a little bit. Last year, we had fewer in chemistry, but we have more in AP language right now. It kind of, you know, depends on what the students are interested in pursuing. Like last year, we had a very large AP biology class. And so with the three different AP sciences, those enrollments, when one goes up, the other will typically go down, and vice versa, kind of thing.
There's some really interesting research around taking, the efficacy of taking AP classes, whether you take the test or not, having a really challenging, rigorous experience can be, or often is quite impactful for students.
And then the next slide just breaks down, and I added a column, so it actually goes all the way back to 2018. I just added the 2023 information, which is why it's a little cut and pasty, but I won't push you to see it with all of the other data. So the numbers of students, again, like we only had nine students take the biology exam last year, and yet we have one of the largest biology classes we have had in quite a few years. So just the number of test takers does not equate to the number of students that are experiencing the course. And to Peter's point, they still get the benefit of, of being engaged with an AP curriculum and what that puts us to prepare them for college.
So just to clarify, do we really care if they take the test? Is it taking the course that's important, or taking the course or the test?
I, I, I think taking the course is important, but I think it warrants a bigger conversation.
I figured it did.
Yeah. I often say that, right, but no.
I will say, I think it's something that the College Board is grappling with. They did just put out a survey to school administrators that I did take, and it was questions that they were asking like that. And I think they're grappling with it because if colleges are not actually awarding credits, that loses some of the incentive to engage in the test from the student side, which makes sense. I also will just say, as a previous AP grader that graded exams, you would know when you got to a school that required test taking because there was a whole lot of just blank tests that kids would sit for hours and not write anything. And so you knew you got to a pile that was a school that was requiring that. And that's not, I don't think, helpful either. So it's a complicated conversation that we should have, you know, more discussion about.
And also, I promised I wouldn't say much.
Yeah.
I have to be good for a while. There's a curriculum problem. And the AP is a, is a corporate curriculum, and you have to teach that curriculum. There's a great article in the Washington Post by a US AP history teacher who talks as being a race against time. He couldn't study the Vietnam War. He spent one period on a period of time from 1945 to 1975, one period he spent. That's the AP curriculum. And I don't know, Kristi, about the administration, but I know since I taught it, it's changed radically. You have to agree to teach a private corporation curriculum being imposed on a public school district. That's one of my problems with AP. And they are pushing AP because of the drop off in income of the SAT.
That's the whole thing, it's, they're trying to make money.
That's right.
So not to go down that rabbit hole, but I will say that we can also,
I promise I won't go down.
We can also, and we can also and do also offer other advanced level course work, right? So Modern European History has been a longstanding program, a course that we offer in the social studies department. It is classified as an advanced course. It doesn't have the AP designation, but it is an advanced course, and it's indicated on students' transcripts that it is an advanced course. And when students' transcripts go to colleges, we did, in the college process, is an advanced course. Other courses like that are the Project Lead Delay courses that we're offering in engineering and in computer science. And in those courses, students take an end of course exam and have the opportunity to get college credit through RTI, RIT, sorry, RIT. So those are the kinds of other opportunities that we're pursuing for students to have advanced level work that doesn't necessarily have to be an AP course. And it's a balance of that, dual enrollment courses, AP courses, advanced level courses.
And probably, some of the merit in it, and I actually agree with you on a lot of it, Bill, is if, if you are applying to a college, and, and even if it isn't corporate curriculum, if you do well on it, you're demonstrating your potential capacity in a way that otherwise, I mean, we have so many nice relationships with so many colleges, they know the quality of what we're doing. But, but if somebody applies to a school we don't have a relationship with, and they have five or six very solid AP scores that, that lets their application be looked at in a different way. But if people could do it, it could be a tremendous cost to teachers and to young people. All right, let me just share one more slide, and this is, back to me. So, and this is, this is, you've seen this, right? This is in our district improvement plan, this is in other things. This is sort of the transition to our next meeting, when we're going to talk in really explicit detail about, like the SOLO, right? You got all the data, you saw the data, you can digest it, you can play around with it, and, and, and what does it look like? And, and, and what are we, what are we doing about it? So one of the things that I'm hoping you do is, is look at things that might have predictive power. Like if you're, if you're labeled high needs, you might be predicted to, to perform in a certain way. And what can we do as, as teachers and staff and administrators and parents and students to interrupt or change that prediction, right? So when I, when I worked in, in New York, they talked a lot about zip code, shouldn't be your destiny, right? What I'd like to talk about is whatever label we all have should be our, our destiny. And, and in there, very specific things we can do, and a lot of our staff and colleagues are doing that to support students in, in moving past sort of predictions or implicit expectations. So I think we'll, we'll talk about that some, we'll talk about how we're going to work with our colleagues in productive ways. We'll talk more about professional development and, and looking at data, particularly student work, and, and connecting to many examples of teacher efficacy, and sort of staff in general, when they're, when they're doing things that are, they're shifting kids to experience. One other thing in your packet is this. So this is the countywide list. And, and this will be widely public too. So this is the meeting and exceeding by every grade level countywide. Now, the first thing that your eye was probably drawn to was the 2021 per pupil total, right? But how much money we're spending. And, and we're investing quite a bit. It's very close to, to our neighbors in Southern Berkshire, and it's higher than some other ones. This number includes all grants, so our total number is higher in part because we get a lot of grants, but we're also making a big, big investment, right? So part of me would like to, and I wasn't able to figure out how to do it, to recalculate it minus the grants. The next thing that's really interesting, and you sort of alluded to this, is in science, we're, we're doing the best in the county. And in many other areas, it flips between Greylock and Lennox. When you look at this chart, and this is a very easy quiz, what do you notice that's different about Greylock, MGRSD, and Lennox in relation to us or some of the other districts? Or some of low income? Yeah, right. This is the percent of low income. So going back to what I was talking about, the predictive thing, like, it's not a surprise that the, the districts with the lowest percent of low income students are, are achieving in many areas, not universally highest. And, and the districts with the highest percentage of low income students are, are often, though not universally, achieving the lowest, right? So our work is to get whatever percentage we have, and it could be low income, it could be any number of other things, and, and meet the young people where they are and exceed the, the expectations or the predictive expectations. And, and when we do it well, like in, in biology, we really do it well. And there are other places that we're not first in the county, but we're third in the county, and we're doing it well, right? So this is a so pillow-when-looking, looking at it and taking things off, like, this is a great chart to look at with your reading glasses and a highlighter, and, and almost like, who's the first in this, is the second, is the third. And it's not a competition, right? We're all doing what, what we're doing. And, and I often say this at the beginning of our testing meeting, like, this is one of many legs of a table. And, and there's other stuff that's going on that's, that's as or significantly more important than our test scores, but it's a lens on our work. And, and we'll make time to, to talk about all, all the other things, but, but I thought this is useful. And then the other side of this page is just student growth percentile. So it's again, another way to, to look at it, but thankfully, like, folks are working really hard, and most of our part growth percentiles are in the 40 to 60% range, which is where I'd like it to be. Some are in the very upper end of it, and, and some are, some are a little below that. But, but it's interesting to look at it in relation to others. Okay, that's a math form. Thanks for putting up with that. I don't like to do like 34 pages of PowerPoint slides, but it's probably warranted once or twice a year. Very good, yeah. And really thoughtful work from the principals on that. So a couple of other things, and I'll try to be quick. Going to try sometime next week to get out a personal electronic survey to student parents and staff. And that's going to be sort of our baseline set of data to inform future conversations. And I'm using a, a norm survey, and I think it'll be interesting. And what, I, you always like to make a prediction when you do a survey. I, I think there'll be a large agreement among students, teachers, and families about some concerns. So stay tuned for that. Maybe would the school committee like to do their own version of it?
True.
Okay, I'll add that to the, I'll add that to the list. But if, if, I'll send it to you separately, so if your school committee and the parent, do it as a parent, and then do it again, if you don't mind, it's not going to be that long, as, as school committee.
Going back to my concern that I mentioned in the middle of the summer, are the students and teachers of the high school going to get together and have a policy suggestion?
I don't worry about a policy suggestion. Our plans right now are to begin with a conversation that I believe will grow out of our soft work. Is that anything that was discussed at the sobriety? Not yet. I'm a part of the environmental system committee, so I'm not very involved in that one. But Keith and I will get back to you, but yes, we'll be having conversations with the high school.
Because maybe the survey should be sent to them.
To the.
Oh, it's just about the students.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.
Really. I, I don't, I don't think we're going to have like the, the first graders do, right?
No, I haven't. Really, and that's our junior high and high schools.
So there's that. Just a quick update on, on the MSBA process, and we'll get to this again. Do you want to come to a case, or do you want me to? About our last meeting? So we had a nice meeting the last time. Everybody formally met, Skanskow was our owner's project manager. They drafted a request for services for the designer slash architect. The MSBAs were viewing that request for services, and then they'll probably send back some, some small edits. And then that'll be posted in, what's it called, Steve, the record?
Central Register.
The central register, right? They'll get posted in the central register, and then hopefully, we get a lot of applications. The, the decision we made was to, for the time being, to mention that it could be a high school of 485 kids for three towns, or 620 kids for eight towns, and to flag that a vote is happening on seven of the towns on the 23rd and one on the 21st of October. And, and then based on what happens, that might, might change. Okay, but we're, I think we're well on our way. A number of people volunteered to be on the review committee for those potential architects, designers. And then the regional school district planning board. So there's stuff in your packet tied to the regional school district planning board. There was a meeting last night on the Hayley that many of us were at. Thank you, folks who made it there, Anne and Bill, we live here.
No.
Okay, no, I'm not calling out, I just didn't see that. And, and some other, other folks. There'll be a, a number of other meetings. I'm asking Jake, everyone, and Lucy to come for a reading in two weeks to, to share some updates following on it. There's a four pager that's framed, it's a yes, no, like, what do you get if you vote yes? What do you get if you vote no? Folks on both sides, I think there are only two sides to this, maybe there's a third. Or is there, is there a third? There's always, there's always. Our, our putting, putting signs and stuff, and, and as much as I like social media to connect with my former students and my friends, I'm sort of staying off of it because it's, it's really unpleasant right now. So that, that goes on.
Okay, so committee policy is not met.
Building's not met.
It's not met. Superintendent's evaluation is not met, technology's not met, finance did lead today. We had an overview, a little bit of just overview of the middle school and the high school, we're in the formative.
Yeah, that was a good conversation, and both Miles and Kristi were, were really well prepared. One of the conversations that came back from middle school was, was trying to build the need for a bilingual counselor. So we're, we're looking into that, and there was a whole discussion of met, unmet needs. And where the state revenue is connected to the potential budget. So interesting, we'll come back soon. There's one other one, Steve, I'd like to mention, I'll reach out to members of this. There's an ad hoc subcommittee on communications. And Sharon and I, we nice to talk with consultants, and we'd like to schedule a meeting tentatively for early November. So I'll, I'll reach out to folks individually about that around, to show next steps. And there's some short-term, low-hanging fruit that I'll work on in the meantime.
Anything else that you have to talk about?
No, I mean, it's the time of year where CLEDO's really getting going. And so there's a lot connected to that. And, and some teacher leadership roles, particularly on this one, connected to the elementary school. At the end, we have this vacancies, it, it looks like we're about to announce, can I say something about that?
I'd love it if you did.
We found a really great eighth grade, I didn't find Miles found, and I piggybacked on his success. A really great eighth grade math teacher who's going to start soon, that's been a longstanding vacancy. He comes to us with 20, 25 years of teaching experience in some of the most interesting schools outside of Boston, and, and most recently abroad. in some of the most interesting schools outside of Boston, and, and most recently abroad in Tanzania. So uh he, he seems just like raring to go, and, and the last step when somebody gets hired is they come in and meet with me and then Doreen. Uh and if we both give somebody the thumbs up, it's a, it's a really big deal, and, and he got a thumbs up today. So I'm, I'm excited about that. Um we, we still need to fill a couple of pair roles, uh some kitchen helper and a cook role, um, um but, but things are, things are moving along, so that's good news.
Any old business? Any public comment?
You just check that, yeah.
So no hands raised. Are you now, Mr. Consent? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.